We're so excited to be taking the tide with us tonight. The people are taking their power back. Of the people, of the beautiful, and the power of the people is always greater than the man who are in power. And they give their power on us. And so, you know what it is? We are gathered here tonight for this phenomenal chance we call the magnetic, dynamic, charismatic, Beto O'Rourke is the one who is the true, the true, the true, the true leader of powerful, high, beautiful, and powerful world that we are gathering on May nineteenth, May nineteenth, one hundred years ago, Malcolm X was born. Malcolm X was born and has become to the legacy of Malcolm X. The only last few years of Malcolm X, the time when he was basically informing us of the need to organize, the need to strategize, the need for those who have been rendered marginalized to know that you still have power. I love this because one thing that was said about Malcolm X that can't be said about Beto O'Rourke is that Malcolm X was an intentional listener. Please don't miss that. He was an intentional listener. How can you be an eloquent orator connecting the dots for the people so that they know they still have the power unless you are an intentional listener? My point here is to say, we are here tonight because Beto O'Rourke, as eloquent as he is, he is an intentional listener. He listens to people. He hears their hearts and their hurts. And so, I'm grateful tonight to introduce to you one in the tradition of Malcolm X, who is a, who is an intentional listener. And as a consequence, he knows what it means to lead. I love this. I'll give it to you like this. I get this looking at Beto O'Rourke. Watch it. Number one, real leaders serve people. If you do this, you will be a failure. And Beto, Beto O'Rourke, Beto O'Rourke is not some end your ass chaser who shows up and makes the evening news. But no, Beto O'Rourke, when the cameras are not there, he is listening to people because he understands that real leadership is not about the people, serves the people. And so, I introduce to you one who is a servant of the people. Wait, not only do real leaders serve the people, but watch this, this is good right here, real leaders also strategize for power. That's what leaders do. They serve the people, but they strategize for power because they recognize and gain that the power of the people is always greater than the people in power. That is why, don't be upset about your position, but I've discovered that every now and then there were those who have power who may not be in position. I gotta help you because you didn't get your shout out. Here it is. I hope you recognize that even though Abraham Lincoln was in position, it was William Lloyd Harrison and Frederick Douglass and Harriet Tubman and George Clinton and Hillary Clinton. They had the power. Y'all listen, I gotta give you another one. Y'all, you know that here it is on December first, nineteen fifty-five, the bus driver and the police officer, they were in position, but Rosa Parks had the power. You do have this guy, yes, ah, the government was so terrible, and he was in position, but Martin Luther King Jr., he had the power. You do know that Barack Obama was in position in California as governor, but it was, ah, the great activist there that had the power by the name of Caesar Chavez. I'm simply trying to say, they just don't have the political position, it just like me, you don't have the power. Can I bring it up to take and simply say that, ah, Trump may be in position, but Beto O'Rourke has the power because the people is there, they got people who are in power. And I say this as I get ready to bring him on. No one's happening right now. Beto gets it, I gotta help you. I have for years could not understand, but I went to a circus, how someone can get in this arena with the queen of the beasts, the lion, and then basically hold the lion at bay with a stool. Watch this, a stool. The person would just hold up the stool. And I learned, here's what happened. They're able to do it because whenever the lion tamer would thrust the stool in the direction of the lion, the lion would see at it. And as a consequence, it was distracted by all that was coming at it. But every day, you get notifications about this lion tamer, they're trying to tame us by tipping us all of this bad news. It's bad news. We have a country now that is engaging in human trafficking. I know they own deportation, no, because deportation sends you back to your own country. Trafficking sends you in a real sense to places you don't even know about, and you get there and you've been trapped in slavery and inhumanity. This country is doing that right now under the leadership of his president. This state in which we live sadly is led by a governor who is determined to defund with education and and so we come all of this stuff being addressed at us, dedicate this bit, and you know I'm a preacher, so I hope you don't mind if I quote Jesus right now. Because Jesus in the flesh or saying about this country, I was hungry and you couldn't snap. I was thirsty and you contaminated water from old Singapore. I was a stranger and you had the nerve to build your walls. I was imprisoned because of your prison industrial complex, America, you have to go there. And America's gonna say, wait, did we do this? He's going to say, whenever you do it to the least of these my sisters and brothers, you are so beginning to be. So, the best thing, the best thing that's going on with us when past what you realize is suddenly, I have the power if the lion just recaptures its vision. And tonight, we have one who's taught us this area to show us that we can recapture the vision because what leaders do, they serve the people, they strategize for power, but then they see possibilities. I like that right there. They see what's possible in spite of the past and particular, and so I hope you don't mind now. If I was said to some, introduce to others, he's incredible, he's phenomenal, he listens intentionally and speaks eloquently. He realizes the people to make America, when America wants to make America, here he is. I'm talking about the incredible, the phenomenal.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Can, can I, can I hear it? From each and every one of you, for Dr. Freddie Haynes. I'm not gonna lie to you, the man who lives in the moment. We don't even have to go to friendship class, he came to us. The week we will go to friendship class again if people have us. Just, just amazing. And, and you know, for those of you who, you know, Dr. Haynes, um, and who live in Dallas, we live in this region, it's easy to take different rent. You know, he's, he's the air that you breathe, the water that you drink. But from our distance in El Paso, a nine hour drive, Muscle Meadows, like El Paso drive out here, we're gonna talk to people in, in New York, in Atlanta, in LA, in Miami. This guy is doing all of us so proud, not because we're Democrats, not because we're sexist, but as Americans and human beings, this is a leader. And thank you all for coming out on Monday.
Thank you for inviting us.
If, you know, is this what you guys get Monday, guys? It's not that. I, I wanna, I wanna, I really mean this. Showing up right now is a real act of faith. It is incredibly powerful for each of us to see each of us, for all of us to know that none of us are alone in this. As Dr. Haynes said, those who are with traditional positions of power and public trust, they want us to feel hopeless. They want us to lose the faith. They want us to give in and they want us to give up. And we don't judge or do we blame those who have made that decision for whatever reason? They just cannot take it anymore. They think that this is inevitable. Maybe they don't read the long view on American history, two hundred and forty-nine years into this project. Maybe this is just the end of the road. And, and look, and when we think about what's happening in, in the totality, that we don't have time to go through every single thing that's happening within to coming out of this country right now. But just for starters, the excitement to political violence in America, whether it was the mass shooting at the Walmart in El Paso in two thousand and thirteen, the interaction attempt on January sixth, twenty twenty-one, or the President of the United States of America carving each and every single person to make deals with the police officer defending this citadel of our democracy to death, and we don't, the parts of them took their own lives in the wake and the aftermath of that. Just turning our back on these alliances that have been so hard fought, so hard won, going eighty years back, all across the globe, that have only made us stronger and better and richer and more successful as a country. And not just turn our back on those allies, but on human rights and on human suffering that's taking place across the world today, complicit in it, in fact, in places like Ukraine, where we've switched sides from the democracy to the tyrant, that tyrant who's sending in missiles and drones and attacking civilians and killing innocent people on buses and civilian centers like Keith. And something that's hard for us to talk about because it divides so many communities. But right now, in the Middle East, our hearts go out to most families who have hostages, brothers, sons, daughters, mothers who are still being held captive by a terrorist organization. And our hearts also go out to Legasmas, the Palestinians who are being killed by the terrorists. And we are not using the unique power that the United States has right now to stop that violence, stop that bloodshed and, and to save those lives. He attacks on law firms and how the audacity to challenge this administration on universities, on students, especially international students exercising their first amendment right to speak. And it's completely, it seems to be over by the Constitution. The rollback of voting rights, that countless people, including from Dallas, were willing to give their lives to be able to earn not just for themselves, but for the rest of us, the rollback to other basic freedoms, the most obscene abortion ban in America that is tossing the lives of Texas women right here in this state. Unfortunately, we live in war, our Constitution, our Constitution, go on all night. They, they want us to give in, they want us to give up, they want us to feel hopeless. Part of the reason that we're holding these town meetings all across the state and across the country for that matter right now, is to bring us together and talk to us and in hope. And let me begin by saying this, if you voted for Donald Trump in twenty twenty-four, we are so glad that you're with us here tonight. Our welcome. If you just didn't like the choices or you just couldn't get around to it, or you happen to live in the most over suppressive state in the Union.
Right.
You are in the right place right now. We are willing to be in this one together. And, and to build on what Dr. Haynes said, there's this great speech, uh, that Abraham Lincoln kissed in eighteen fifty-eight. Uh, I can identify and sympathize with a guy, ex-congressman, run for Senate, loses that race, president. And he's talking about the nature of power in America. And he's talking about the power of the presidents, the power of the courts, the power of the legislatures. We can add to that the power of the oligarchs who have concentrated all of the economic power in this country in their hands, or the cultural power in the hands of these billionaire masters of algorithm and influence on these social media platforms. Who are we, what is in our hands compares to all of that? Well, Lincoln in eighteen fifty-eight, another very divided, polarized, fraught moment, pregnant with possibility and Thomas, but also danger and strife and death. Imagine the hundreds of thousands of lives that'd be lost over the coming decade to answer the question whether one American can own the life of another. And anticipating that, Lincoln says, against all that power in these presidential centers, is the power of all of us. And in his words, he says, public sentiment is everything. With it, nothing can fail. Without it, nothing can succeed. What he is talking about is our power individually and personally, but more importantly, together, to push this country politically in these moments of truth. Dr. Haynes cited a few of those earlier. I'd add one to the long list that he gave us. Out of civil rights is cast, thanks to the first president from the state of Texas, Lyndon Baines Johnson, using all the political capital he had at his disposal to get civil rights done, ending nearly ninety years of Jim Crow and segregation and the worst darkness in America since the era of civil rights. In the way of that, Dr. King, fresh from receiving the Nobel Peace Prize in Switzerland, is there in the Oval Office of the White House. Mr. President, he says, we cannot thank you enough. In fact, this country will owe you forever a debt of gratitude that will never be able to fully repay. And Johnson said him. And then King says, but now, Mr. President, we'd like to vote. You go to a community like Selma, Alabama, the majority of the population there will be black. We, we challenging Mr. President to find a single black voter on the rolls. They could have said the same thing about Dallas, Texas, or Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Do you think in the states of the former Confederacy in nineteen sixty-four, when they're having this conversation, and you'd be hard pressed to find a black voter on the rolls? And if there's a black voter on the rolls, taking their own life in their own hands to exercise that fundamental constitutional right and actually cast that ballot? And what does Johnson, the most powerful man of any conventional measure, what does he say to Dr. King? He says, you know what? I used it all up on civil rights, all that political capital is spent. He said, Dr. King, I'm sorry, I just don't have the power. And as they leave, a dejected young Jersey king, he says, well, what do we do now? And King says, we go out there and we get disguised to power.
Right.
Well, we have to pay, we need, we want, every day, Americans, every day, Texans, like all of us who are here right now, we took to the State House steps, we lit up the switchboard at the Capitol, we wrote to the president, we protested, we marched, we sat in, we did everything we could think to do, trying to break through, until months later, on the seventh of March, nineteen sixty-five, one of us did. Twenty-four years old, John Lewis, with six hundred other husbands, he asked him, he said, we know that he experienced in Selma, Alabama, very city, King cited in that meeting with Johnson. And for having the courage of his convictions, he nearly lost his life in the process, but thank God the press, not the enemy of the people, but the best defenders of this democracy, if you ask me. There is people, there are people who not all of them across the country, around the world, is so galvanizing. It's such a powerful catalyst that President Johnson, within eight days, lightning speed in American politics, is able to be a joint session of the House and the Senate. He finally has the power that he had been lacking, and he says to them, look, this guy, John Lewis, he may be twenty-four years old, he may be black in a country where blacks do not have power, certainly not political power, but I put him in the pantheon of great American heroes who've made this country the exception on the front. And he told, he said, hasn't been a less extreme concord, as it was a hundred years ago at that courthouse in Athletics, I always thought he should have added, as it was on those beaches in June of forty-four, when brave Americans from Dallas willingly gave their lives to fight off fascists and the wrong, to defend democracy here in one. So, he is now concerned. That our fellow Americans are willing to pay the ultimate price for us to fulfill our promise and realize our potential as a country. And you, the members of the House of the Senate, you have the power to defer. All they ask is the right to vote. That's summer. Johnson's able to sign the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five in the law, creating for the first time in American history, something important in human democracy. Well, there's millions of them on those beaches in Normandy, and I think there's something like nine thousand three hundred and twenty-five white classes. Every single one of them was one of us back in nineteen forty-four, who willingly signed that blank check and gave their lives for us to be here today in two thousand and twenty-five. All of them, and all of their service and their struggle and their sacrifice have been passed down to us. And the question for you and for me is, are we the worthy heirs of what we have been given by those who preceded us? The generation of seventeen seventy-six, eighteen sixty-five, nineteen forty-four, nineteen sixty-five, and here we are today, and here are the words, sixteen years later, two thousand and twenty-five. And really, in the words of Abraham Lincoln, nobody saves or meaningfully moves the last, best hope of earth. No president, Donald, Texas. But this one, this one is on us. There is no one that bribes the rest, there's no Supreme Court that is going to decide the law of behavior. Like the main constitution, it's still acting right down of this President of the United States of America. There's no state legislature in the state of Texas that is going to find the moral real power to do the right thing at this moment in truth. It is, as Dr. Haynes said, the power of the people, as Abraham Lincoln said, public sentiment, that as we meet here tonight, we begin to shape and to push and to help those who are in these positions right now, who have the power to do the right thing, the real power and the push to get it done. So, what I hope we do over the course of tonight's conversation, it is listen to one another about what we're feeling, what we're hearing, what we're thinking, and most importantly, what we're willing to do.
Yeah.
My fear is, if we've been waiting until twenty twenty-six, or God forbid, twenty twenty-eight, this thing may well be over. And, and we do not want to be the generation, two forty-nine years into this thing, that was, that screwed up, I don't think we're going to be. I was asking Dr. Haynes, you were speaking ahead of time, he's traveling the country, he's everywhere, he was just in Louisiana, before that, he was on the East Coast, before that, the West Coast. How are you feeling right now? And he said, I feel hopeful. People are stepping up, they're standing up to be counted, including in the places that have been told that they don't have it. I was in Tuscaloosa, Alabama. President Trump had imposed himself on the University of Alabama graduation. He invited himself to be the commencement speaker. Typical Trump, he's, he's gonna outshine and overshadow their celebration, their achievement, all of their hard work. And so, students reached out to me. Now, the DNC did not tell them to do this. No member of Congress, the United States Senate said, you know, here are your order students, go out and invite Beto O'Rourke. Um, I'm probably the last one, I'm like number seven or near list. But I said, I, and I'm on the plane from El Paso to Alabama, they don't know that they're not supposed to matter. They don't know that there are so-called reds. They don't know that, that no one's gonna listen to their voice. And you know what? Fifteen hundred people showed up in that park in Tuscaloosa, Alabama, and they came together, and as I'm giving this speech, and I get off and I go stage right, this woman comes up to me and she said, I love that you mentioned John Lewis, I love that you drew upon this Alabama history. I was fifteen years old, marching with John Lewis across the African path, and I'm like, yeah, he's a legend. This is, this is great. We are getting much stronger stuff than Trump is anticipating right now. He thinks this thing is already, he's already running for his third term, right? We're already standing him for the crown, sizing him for the throne. We, the people, have a say in this. Last thing, and again, not everyone here is a Democrat, that is by design. We reached out to Republican clubs, Democratic clubs, independents, everyone in the country. But within my party, the Democratic Party, there is this hair pulling and teeth gnashing and consternation over what the message is and where we need to be right now. And some are, are saying, well, we need to be more centrist and we need to be more moderate. Others say we need to be more progressive, more liberal, we need to be bold. And folks are in different places along the spectrum. I really wonder if that is not in fact a false choice, and perhaps the wrong question. The way, the way the question right now, not just for the Democratic Party, but for the American people, is, are you gonna surrender or are you gonna fight? For the past few years tonight, are you gonna surrender or are you gonna fight? What do you say? That's, that's the way I feel. And so, as, as I come to a close, and Darine Patel is back here in this striped shirt, raise her hand to me, she's got the microphone and she's gonna bring it to you if you have a question, where you have as many voices in this. But as we come to a close, and we've just committed to one another, we said it out loud that we were going to fight, let's make sure that we do this together, right? And, and no one is too Republican, no one is too much of a former Trump voter, no one's too Democrat, no one's too much of a former Kamala voter, to be in this coalition. We are a united front, we're gonna fight together for the most important thing right now, and that is the future of our country here. I want to thank the wonderful, the very hands, my wife, my friend, the other Democrats who helped organize this, and everyone who came out. Darine Patel's got this microphone, if you raise your hand, she'll bring it to you, we'll get as many people as this. You don't have to agree with me, you can criticize, you can ask a question, you can say something uncomfortable, we just ask everybody to be civil, be cool with one another, and we're gonna get through this, right? That's for us, that is for us in the country. All right.
Hi, so I'm seventeen, I'll be eighteen by the next major, and I was just wondering, as a young person, getting age in politics, what can I do now to make a difference going forward?
To back to seventeen, not all of us to vote, if you're here tonight, who you're gonna choose. Plenty of groups to volunteer with, uh, which I would recommend. We have a group called Power by People, and we are posting up where young people are, college campuses, community college campuses, uh, bars, cafes, wherever folks are hanging out. And our volunteers are trained volunteer deputy registers, which means they're legally able to register a voter in Dallas County. The other thing that we do is after we register that voter, we ask them if we can have their cell phone number. We say in tough with that voter, and thirty days after we register them, we, we send them a text, hey, did your voter registration card come in the mail? If the answer is no, we follow up with the Secretary of State's, uh, website to see if we can confirm that voter there. If we need to call them, we do. When it gets closer to Election Day, here's the phone voter ID that you will need to bring, here's your nearest early voting location. And because we are a partisan organization, we're also able to say, here are the candidates who believe that a woman should be able to make her own decisions about her own body. Right here, the candidates who want this, who want us to connect, and we need to do this, they're going to go to the race, they're going to hit the candidate that says, can I take it, fight climate change before it's late, you name it, we will connect you with that voter. If you would like to volunteer with us, we would love to have you. And we've got And we've got folks who are wearing these high visibility yellow vests all around, they have clipboards, they will sign you up. If you miss them, you can go to poweredxpeople.org. So volunteer with us, and that's so you don't have to wait till 2026, which is also a reward, and we're glad you can be voting. But let's all agree that we get to work now. Thank you for being here.
Okay, I have a general observation. The Democratic Party is very bad at messaging, you all know that. But what I don't hear is strategy right now. Yes, we are all fired up to fight back. What's the plan? Okay? I have a suggestion. Use the laws that they're passing against them. With the challenging Milwaukee, who is being charged for obstruction, is now using the Supreme Court's ruling of immunity against them. Trump just passed me on today about bullying online. How many times has that idiot created life for us? The next time he decides how to bully online, or anyone in his administration, every bone The worst part of the fact, a lot of us haven't had a call, but actually started doing something that puts that back on their heels.
Thank you. I'm like this, so let's use whatever they're doing in that energy back against them as well, and then for our part, again, not everyone is Democrat, okay? But for the Democratic Party, what I witnessed in 2024 was a party that raised and spent, I don't know how many hundreds of billions of dollars, more than a billion dollars, about close to zero of it in the state of Texas. I don't know if we matter or not, I think the 30 million people who live here do, and are really representative of the people. For almost every party, so the gentleman's going about strategy within the seven so-called battleground states, and those folks are important as well. But here's the truth and the math that makes the case for Texas and the long-term strategy that I think we should employ. 2030, which will be upon us before we know it, this country will conduct another census. What they will find is that every one of those battleground states lost population, and that population flowed to places like Texas. Come 2032, two presidential elections away, we will have 44 Electoral College votes. So the Democratic nominee in that year can win every single one of the so-called blue wall battleground states. But if she or he does not win the state of Texas, there is no ticket to white House. If we start working on Texas in 2032, or 2031, or 2030, it is too late. We have to send a census to the rest of the country, that history is very good, and the Electoral College is very good. We got to put our vote into the bid, as long as it's coming out, so maybe we could get to the election, the younger. And just imagine this, just imagine this, you're getting your win-win site. What it would feel like, win on election night, for the first time since the year of our Lord 1976, they call Texas for the Democratic nominee. All the folks are waving at me, but Dorie Patel in the striped shirt has the microphone.
Yeah, so this is going to be our next question. Hi, Dana, so glad to be here. My name is Kendall, I'm a local volunteer for our local chapter, I'm 5051DFW. Thank you. So I have a question, we talked a little bit just now about voting in Texas, and it's just so clear that there was an old study floating around, something like 47% of the votes of the population are not factored into the policy that happens at the federal level, and we can already see the wheels turning on how that's possible, because have any of y'all heard of the Tarrant County redistricting that they're trying to get rid of? Yeah, so they're basically shading off black voters from Precinct Two and trying to put Precinct One and delete the black vote, and Democrats are trying to stop it, and that's what's going on right now. And I just wanted to ask if you had any advice for people like me, and people like all of us, members of the working class, who are here to engage in hyperbolic resistance in an effective way? I guess there is me.
Thank you. So it's very, 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 very interesting, because I've got a question for you. I'll give you a channel answer, but you're doing the work. And so would you help us in answering at least a specific part of your question? When is your next organizing meeting? How do those of us who either live in Tarrant County, or have friends or family, get the word out for them to join you at that? How do we have your back in this?
Thank you so much for asking. So 5051, we're a completely grassroots organization, we have a website, it's 5051Texas.com, and if you sign up, we have an email list, and that's how you can get in contact with the messages we're putting out and our calls to action. So I wanted to thank everybody that you end up joining us.
That's 5051.
5051, so 50501Texas.com.
Okay, so if you're interested in helping out, and if three different things happen in Tarrant County, this is what I'm talking about, not waiting till 2026, not waiting till the next election, there's work to be done right now. Let me tell you all why this has to happen. And again, Dr. Haines is going to be building on your introductory remarks. You know, I just gave you this beautiful, wonderful story about American history, that the power of people, giving that to President Johnson, signing the Voting Rights Act of 1965. You know that that was reauthorized in 1975, and it was reauthorized and expanded to allow for language minorities. People who didn't speak English couldn't read the ballot, but we're US citizens, they were picking our food out of the ground so it could be on our plates, they were now included in the reauthorization in 1975. It's reauthorized in the 80s, in the 90s, in the early 2000s, and in 2013, there is a Supreme Court decision that many of you are familiar with called Shelby versus Oldham. And the lawyers who were ruling in that decision, in their infinite wisdom, decided that they no longer needed the Voting Rights Act anymore. We're done with the power held by those in positions of public trust, who use it to stay in power at the expense of those who are conventionally powerless. We don't have to worry about black and brown communities being disenfranchised, we still have racism in America anymore. Ruth Bader Ginsburg, one of the justices, hit her scathing dissent, said, that is why I'm going out in the rainstorm, and using your umbrella, which keeps you dry from 1965 all the way to 2013, and you know it's still raining because it's kept you dry, your logic was that it's time for you to put it away. Well, since that decision, no state has gotten soaked harder than Texas. Within minutes of that decision, we imposed the most onerous voter ID law, means that you can use your license to buy a firearm in Texas to prove you are at the polling place, but you cannot use your student ID if you're in Houston, Texas, at Dallas, to do the same. Texas closed down 750 polling places across the state, that's twice the number of the next closest state. Guess what? Every single one of them is a fast-growing black or brown neighborhood. When you see it, I'm lying eight hours long outside of TSU in Houston, Texas, it's not just that people are fired up to vote, thank God, they're waiting eight hours to do that, it's because the other polling places have been closed down, and that indignity has been upon them. When you see this gerrymandering that you're describing, where you're cynically manipulating voters based on the color of their theory, racial gerrymandering, states placed at the congressional level, all the way down to the county commissioners' court level, that is happening because we no longer have the protection of the PRA. What's the lesson I take from that? No victory, no matter how just, no matter how hard one is ever fighting, we have to continue to fight day in and day out. So if we win these elections in 2026, the job is not over, we're living in 2028, we have to stay around here, and we've got to have their back right now. So we're all going to go to 5051Texas.com, make sure it's a, get the alerts, and it's still up here in that meeting in San Antonio. Thank you.
Okay, this is going to be our last question, we're up to nine.
We'll get more, we'll get a few more, and I'll be, I'll be in front of your my ass this.
Sure.
So, I, I have a question, are you going to face Governor R. Rabin again? And if you, what do you think's going to happen?
Thank you for being here. The question about running for office, and you all know that I'm a sucker for this stuff, right? I, I have been running, sometimes winning, political campaigns, 2005, running for city council, running for Congress, running for reelection to Congress, and it's still been no so far, right? What I've learned from those races, this is one of the things to set core condition mine, is it's so incredibly important, but we try, even if the odds are not in our favor. That race needs ten truths, so many of you helped us out with in 2018. But what we did with it, this movement that all of us created together, we helped propel 12 insurgent Democrats, who defeated 12 incumbent Republicans in the State House. We all helped. This guy may call long run defeat, and a chance to come back to the presidency. In very, in Texas, the majority of America, 17 black women won the election to position in California too. So we may not have won it, but we took it, but we still won and transformed the state in the process. So I think about that outcome when I consider your question, but here's the thing for me, if you're asking me if I'm personally going to run, I just want to make sure that whatever I do is helpful and useful, is the best use of what I can contribute. If that is being a candidate, you know that I'm not afraid, right? You know that I will do it. If it's somebody else who's a candidate, you know that I will do that as well. If it is continuing to lead powered by people, these extraordinary volunteers, who are registering tens of thousands of voters every year, and that's how we contribute, I will do that as well. But my message to you is that each of us has to do all we can with what we have, where we all have the talent to bring to this party, all we need to do, so we'll see on the decision we run, we're on the road, but right now, let's just continue to stay after it, be there for one another, and show up like you're showing up here tonight. Thank you for coming.
I don't know, I don't know if you remember me, the last time I met you, was when the hospital social worker nurse killed, and I asked you about that over at Eastville College. Thank you for coming tonight and doing everything you can do. I am a veteran, and I'm now a senior citizen on Social Security. And my question to you is, Greg Abbott had a surplus for property taxes that he said he was going to reduce for us. Is that maybe why my mortgage is worth $80 a month? I want to know what happened to all that money. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, thank you for serving. The VA, they're going to knock out 83,000 positions at the VA. Most of those are occupied by veterans right now. And you mentioned your property tax bill, this voucher thing. If Dr. Haines referred to that at the outset, which is, that you're paying into the state right now, and take it from the public local schools that your kids are going to, and send it to families, most of whom are already sending their kids to private schools, and subsidize their education. The promise was somehow also to fund, that they were also going to fund public education. We have one of the lowest levels of public funding for schools in America. School teachers in Texas, on average, are working two or three jobs to make ends meet. Retired teachers went 20 years without a cost of living adjustment, and because they have not stepped up with this bounty, this surplus they did not create, but came from all of us and success that we produced, because they're not doing that, your property tax bill is going to go up, the largest taxing mandate in almost every political jurisdiction is school debt, and as we continue to cut state funds, and now the president is cutting Title I and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act on some of these schools, you are the person who's going to be asked to hold the bag at the end of the day. If you do not like this, and I know you don't, it is time that we go to our school board meetings, speak to the calling of the public, make sure those trustees know how we feel, and by the way, congratulations on how you did this school board meeting, this is my second, thanks for having me. You all now still have your vote, and you are, it means voting to, if you can't make this right down to Austin, Texas, while this legislature is still in session, it means talking to your representative, if he or she doesn't agree with you on these things, as someone who has once been in one of those positions, that pressure really works, when you show up, people really listen. If you were to administer a truce to anyone in elected office, and you ask them their number one priority, it's not education, it's not taxes, it is securing their own reelection. If you make them know that what they're doing is unpopular, and finally looking out for you, the taxpayer and the veteran, and the person who's paid in Social Security every working day of your life, I guarantee you they're going to fear you when they fear Donald Trump or Greg Abbott, and we've got to show up and make them feel that. Thank you.
My name is Connie Ramos Caide, I live here in Alabama, I've lived here for over 40 years. I just ran for city council, I'm actually mayor of Garland. And it was very exciting, we have a population of 463,000 people in the area of Garland, and less than 10,000 people went out to vote. So my question to everybody in here is, what is our strategy going to be? We can go out and we can register a million people, but we cannot get to people, to get out to them, to follow. How are we going to get our consent? How are we going to get it? So we can have a connection with all the states. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to speak back. My tax bill, it includes municipal and school elections across the state of Texas, the peak turnout is at 12%, 10%, 5%, 3% in so many communities. It is a minority, the minority of the minority is actually voting to decide who holds the power, the biggest power, city budgets, county budgets, school district budgets, all being decided by 10% of the population. The power that we're trying to do with Powered by People, I mentioned, we're registering people to vote, we get their cell phone numbers, we stay in touch with them, we make them aware, not just of the big November elections, not just the Democratic and Republican primaries in March, but these municipal elections that take place in May. Listen, in the only moment, right now, releasing this, against someone like Donald Trump or Greg Abbott, is the city council member, the school board trustee, the county commissioner, the county attorney, can we hear it from play, Jenkins? If we're not hoping, if we're not mobilized, we're not going to be that ballpark in that defense against Trump right now. 2026 is really, something that didn't just happen in 2025, including right here in Garland, Texas. So, again, whether it's Powered by People, whether it's Dallas County Democratic Party, whether it's just talking to your friends and neighbors, classmates, and colleagues, we've got to make sure everyone is aware, there is no act right now too small to make a difference, including voting in May. So thank you, Connie, for staying there. All right, for Dorie.
Next question, I'm over here.
Hi, my name is Isaiah Duthers, I'm a rural Democrat and a member of the trans community group, and I may not be trans, but I am a proud ally of the trans community. One, um, genocides don't start with gas chambers and concentration camps. What is the Democratic Party going to do to protect trans people? Because it's so late, it feels like they're abandoning them, and the Ford's too late, we know what's going to happen.
Thank you for answering. Hey, this is something each of us, each of us can do, because this is a real test, a real trial for us as a country, and for each of us personally. Why is Trump, why is Abbott, why are they picking on the people that they're picking on right now? The bet that they're making is that if you don't want to stand next to that trans person, that trans person is politically unpopular right now. You see national Democrats running away from them right now, following them under the bus, they represent, I don't know how big a part of the population, I mean, they're less than the number of people that vote in school board elections, okay? Just to give us a benchmark, how many of them are playing interplayage sports, or middle school soccer right now, if that's three kids in the public schools? Want to make you more afraid of that than anything, every single ad they ran in 2024 was about trans people coming to get you. How many of you have gotten by a trans person? Can you call any? Here's another thing they tried to do, you know what? We're going to invoke a law passed in 1798, that's only ever been used in World War 1912 or World War II. When we used Alien Enemies Act in World War II, we used it to round up Japanese nationals and fat-based Americans, and put them in internment camps, or just deport them altogether, or kind of human trafficking. or just deport them altogether, or the kind of human trafficking that the Reverend just talked about earlier. That is being invoked right now to deport immigrants and their U.S.-sister children with cancer without dedication, state support, and survival. Not to the country from which they came, but very often to the largest prison on the planet that is known for torture, brutality, and suffering. Everyone goes in, not a single person, everybody comes out. These are life sentences for... You mean what? We have no idea because there's been no process of constitutional protections, no will to note their names, the crimes they allegedly committed, or for them to be able to mount a defense. What is the bet that they're making? Well, you're not gonna wanna stand next to that guy who has tattoos on his neck, who's been accused of being a terrorist, or a thug, or a gang banger. So you're just gonna be quiet while we put him on a plane and send him to El Salvador. Do you all know the poem that arose from the Holocaust, right? And first they came from the Marxists. I wasn't a Marxist, so I didn't say anything. Then they came from the trade unions. I'm not a trade union member, so I didn't say anything. Then they came for the Jews. I'm not a Jew, so I didn't say anything. Then they came for me, and there was nobody left to say a thing. That is what we're on right now. And your point is actually, if I'm gonna come up, if you're gonna go to the back of the room, exactly what I'm gonna do. Because, as I said earlier, this is on all of us. Those trans people in your school, in your workplace, in this audience right now, make them know that you are on their side, stand with them, the choice is free. That is what we're on. I was talking to a student, they were coming in, and you were talking about something that you've seen in El Paso, which is that, you know, kids who come from mixed immigration status families of stuff going to school. They're so afraid that when mom or dad drops them off, mom or dad is going to El Salvador, which you told. And the kid, my little U.S.-sister kid, may go to El Salvador as well. Do you find that kid in your classroom? Do you find that kid in your neighborhood? Do you find their parents and you say, what can I do to help you right now? I literally physically am going to stand with you. If we do not do that, if we don't hang together, we are going to swing along. And this guy is deadly serious about it. So let's make that commitment. We're gonna be there for each and every single one of us.
Ben, this is your last question for tonight.
Hi, Ben. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on coming. All these people that are here, Ben was so inspiring, and he turned out a lot of votes. But everyone here needs to get involved in some way. There's Garland area Democrats, Dallas County Democrat, Plum, God be the organization. Our county chair was here a while ago. And we have President Hollow, you have Bridgerton area Democrats. To give the vote out, people in long precincts. And it's a great way to meet your neighbors, it's a great way to see different neighborhoods you never knew existed. But that's what it takes. And maybe you don't wanna vote for it, or maybe you wanna write postcards. It takes everyone. So this voting is great, but to overcome what we're up against at this point, it is gonna take more than voting. It takes becoming a VPR. And you can register being holders, being voters. But all of those little incremental things happen, and it takes, you know, you go to an organization, it's just the same volunteers. We need more. We need more volunteers to make phone calls, to write postcards, to walk neighborhoods. But that's what it takes. So it also gets you involved and being, giving the feeling that you are part of the solution.
I love that. Thank you. If you don't want to rate in 2026, if you wanted to rate now because you understand how dire this situation is, how close you are to the precipice, how late the hour. It's powered by people, volunteers, young investors, signing up. We will train you this week. If you don't have time this week, we'll train you next week. We will deploy you, we'll get you out in front of people, register them, host, and bring them on to the rolls. And this stuff works. So if you have a neighbor or a friend says, hey, will you join me at a protest on the street corner? Will you come out to a town hall meeting? Will you go to this march movie in the crowd? You just say yes to whether there's three people or 300. And the last thing, to your excellent line, I'm going to vote for it. I promise you, this stuff works. The only reason I'm here is because it works. When I first ran for Congress against an eight-term incumbent, I spent five to one. We made virtue necessity, we knocked up doors. You know, if we didn't have the money or the initiative to mail or TV, we'd have reached them in person every single day, 100 to 120 doors. Towards the end of the campaign, it was one Thursday, I remember well. I knocked on the student's door, she answered, she invited me in, poured me a cup of coffee, told me about her daughter who's a school teacher and how hard she struggles. Her grandson was a Marine, how proud she was of him. The child was off for 30 minutes, and they really didn't talk politics or partisan shit, or policy, or any of that stuff, just about, for family. That next Monday, I go into a diner and this young man stops me and says, are you back to O'Locke? I am. Well, you knocked on my grandmother's door last Thursday. And you talked about the... But every Sunday, me and my 32 other cousins are house in here. And each and every single one of us promised to vote for you in this next election. So I don't know who can all vote for you, who can win this thing, who can pick. There's still enough to happen. Use your luck tonight and this matter. So let's remember this and fund here. Let's choose action each and every day, the key to victory and the antidote to despair. And if you do that, we will win. Thank you all for coming. Thank you. Thank you. Love you.
Could we ask for a minute? I would like to please call the law. Okay, I'll get ready.
I'll send you those notes.
Okay.
And I, I got... But it was your shoulder, his shoulder and your shoulder. It's something, better than nothing. At least I tried.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not a different manager, oh, silver, different watch, my eyes.
A wheelchair. That's what we need.
That's it, I'll take it. Got it. Okay, I might jump in.